Good evening. To our Thursday, January 23rd, 2020 regular monthly meeting. I do apologize for our lateness, but we had a lot of items on our early meeting that required some lengthy discussion, so I do apologize for our lateness. At this time, I would ask you to please stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. And welcome to our monthly board meeting tonight. I'd like to say good evening to all of the family and community members that have joined us this evening. Before I get into the report, I would like to make a couple of introductions and welcome a couple of people to the Portsmouth Public Schools family. And for my first is a welcome back, and that's Mrs. Jessica Duran is our Executive Director of Human Resources. She was gone all but maybe two, three months, and she couldn't stay away.
There you go.
Yeah, so welcome back, Mrs. Duran. And also Dr. Jerry Simmons, who's our new Director of Auxiliary Services, is present with us. Yeah, they both started January 6th, so we're glad to have them onboard. So, tonight, the good part of this meeting is always hearing from our students. And the first group is Brighton Elementary School, who will be represented tonight, who will be presenting our pledge and our statement. And providing that to us this evening is for the pledge, as I call your names, you can come on up and I'll read the bio. So will Kalia Smith, please come forward. Now, am I pronouncing that correctly? Kalia, okay, I want to make sure. Kalia is a 4th grade honor roll student at Brighton Elementary School. She's a model student, often being described as friendly, kind, and honest by her peers. Kalia has perfect attendance to this point in the school year. She participates in the Extreme Force Competition Cheerleading Squad outside of school, where she's learning the necessary skills to one day be a Brighton cheerleader as well. Her favorite thing to do in the community is to keep it clean, and because of this, Kalia chooses to pick up trash and put it in its right place to help keep Portsmouth beautiful. Kalia has aspirations to be a motivational singer and wants to live a life that can be a model to her little sisters Cadence and Kalina. Kalia's parents are Fuchsia, I hope I'm, what is, I want to make sure I say that correctly. Fuchsia, okay. And Deandre Smith. And if you all are present, will you please stand and be recognized? And for our statement this evening, Cameron Slade. Cameron is a 5th grade student at Brighton, who has been on the honor roll since kindergarten. When approached about this opportunity, Cameron mentioned that it is an honor to be selected to speak positively about his school. Of the five standards of learning assessments that Cameron has taken at Brighton, he has scored past advanced on four of these, with his lowest score being a 489. Cameron has been described as an energetic and fun student who is serious about his academic performance by his peers. Cameron is highly active in the community, participating in karate, soccer, bowling, tee ball, and swimming. In the little spare time that he has, he loves to play basketball and football, hang out with friends, reading and writing his own stories. He also enjoys being a big brother to his best friend Carter Slade, a 2nd grader at Brighton. Cameron has aspirations to be an oncologist because of his passion for finding a cure for cancer. Cameron's parents are Claudia Carrington and Stephen Slade, and if they're present along with any other family members, please stand at this time to be recognized. Thank you for being here. Also, we'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Wilson, Principal, and any of the Brighton staff that may be present tonight. Okay, Kalia, we're ready for the pledge.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may sit down.
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, and all that are assembled here tonight. My name is Cameron Slade, and I'm a 5th grade student at the fully accredited Brighton Elementary School. It is my honor to share with you the wonderful things, the wonderful and exciting things that are happening at the Hive. I've been a student at Brighton since kindergarten, and though many things have changed over that time, one thing that has remained constant is we have the best faculty and staff in the city of Portsmouth. Our principal, Mr. Wilson, promised transformation last school year, and along with our new Assistant Principal, Mrs. Fakes, they're doing just that. Imagine coming to school on the first day and seeing the stretched limo and the red carpet welcoming us to the new school year. If you can't believe that, imagine my surprise this year on the first day of school when I looked up and saw a plane circling the building with a banner that read "BES," a fully accredited school, "Welcome Back." These are just two examples of the way our school cares about us. It is because of this that our students strive to overachieve in everything they do. Our vision is to prepare our students to be academically and socially successful and leaders in their community, and through support from our amazing parents, Brighton is leading the way in getting us ready for our bright future. Our school has several programs that benefit us on a daily basis, whether it is events supported by PBIS, such as our dances and spirit dates, or after-school events like the Brighton tailgate or field day. We always have something to do that is fun at our school. We also earned a grant to host the 21st Century Enrichment Program this year, which has had a great benefit on our students. Students can also participate in Odyssey of the Mind, be on the chess team, or even become a Brighton cheerleader or basketball player during the year. We are also excited to welcome the Steel Drum Program this year to our school. As you can see, it is always a great day to be a bumblebee. Above all, our school is focused on breaking the stereotype that exists that says students that live in urban environments cannot learn. We prove the critics wrong every day just by being the best that we can be. Mr. Wilson has helped us to believe we can accomplish anything, and even brought a statement of affirmation to our school that we say daily. Our affirmation goes like this. I am what I am. I am not an afterthought. I am part of the original plan. My destiny is success, so I must do my best, and by the end of this year, I will pass every test. My mission is clear. I will learn without fear. I will make those that love me proud and stand out amongst the crowd. I was born for this, aiming high so I won't miss. Brighton has my back, and that's a fact. We've got this. I am so proud to be a bumblebee. Before I leave, I just want to thank my family for the positive impact they have on me, my 4th and 5th grade teachers for helping me to love school. I will not be where I am today if it were not for them. Thank you for your time, and enjoy the rest of your night.
And Cameron, I expect one day you're going to be running for office, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Mr. Lamb?
On behalf of the School Board, and your amazing success and that wonderful speech, we just want to present these to you as just tokens of appreciation and best of luck to you. Thank you very much for being here, as well as the parents.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Members, please indicate your attendance by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Eight Members present, one Member absent.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Mr. Lamb will bring us the mission statement, please.
Thank you. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. At this time, Board Members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda for this evening. Would you please make your preference by electronic vote?
Need a motion.
Leave for approval. Trying to hurry up. Do I have a second? Ms. Williams, second. Any discussion? Here are no discussion. Please make your preference by electronic vote. Thank you.
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. Oh, this is a good part, too. Our student representative, our monthly report, Ms. Nyla Deans, come forward.
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, Dr. Bracy, Members of the Board, and all those assembled. This evening, I'm here to share with you my report for the month of January. All right, so if everyone will direct their attention to the board, we can get started. All right, so first off, we have our students at Douglas Park Elementary, who got involved in their family math night, and I found this as a great way for parents to get a better understanding of what their kids are doing in school, because I know a lot of parents, they get home from work, tell their kids to do their homework, and if their kids need help, they take one look at it and don't know what they're looking at. So I found that this is a great way to, you know, understand what their kids are doing, excuse me, and to, you know, just be a part of that, and I thought it was a great way for them to get involved with each other, and also it was an extra lesson for the students. All right, next, we have students from Churchland Elementary and John Tyler, who participated in STEAM Night. For those who don't know what that is, it stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, and I found that this was a great way, not only for students, but also for parents, to get involved in a hands-on approach to teaching this academic discipline. All right, next, we have a couple of notable mentions. So as you can see, we have a few students from IC Norfolk High School, who were a part of the induction of the National Honor Society. So the National Honor Society is an organization dedicated to encourage and recognize outstanding high school students, and this is from grades 10 to 12, I believe. I don't think it includes our graders, but I just wanted to congratulate them because it's an excellent achievement that they have. All right, and next, we have our boys from the Woodrow Wilson Basketball Team, and they're doing an outstanding job this year with their record of 13 and 2 now, I believe. And I just want to give them some props, because, you know, everybody just has been talking about it. I don't know if y'all have social media, whatever, if you see it on Facebook and Instagram, they're debating with us, you know, it's just a lot going on, but I just want to give them their props, because they really earned it. All right, we have some upcoming events. First, we have our Celebrity Reader Night, which will be held on January 30th, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, at the Emily Spahn Center. It's free admission, and they're having a special, a surprise special guest to come out, so I feel like that'll be a great opportunity for families to get out and do something that night. And next week, we're starting a new semester, so that's very exciting. We'll be closed on Monday for Teacher Work Day, and then our final first semester report cards will be sent out. And I'm just proud of all the students, elementary through high school, for the excellence that they did throughout this first semester, and I hope they did, I hope that they'll continue to do a good job through this new semester. And a little shout-out for myself, tomorrow is my last day of high school. I'll be moving on to TCC in February. I'll start taking classes there, then I'll transfer to NSU. So, yeah, I'm really excited about that. I'm ready to start my future, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is student readmission and religious exemption. Consideration of readmission, case number 201920/04. The recommendation by the superintendent is not to readmit. Board Members, what is your pleasure? Motion's been made by Reverend Patillo, and second by Mrs. Hines. Any discussion? I mean, Mrs. Williams, seconded, yes. To accept the superintendent's recommendation not to readmit. His recommendation is not to readmit. Is that correct? It's to readmit. I'm sorry, to readmit.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
So...
To readmit. Yeah. Right.
The motion is to readmit.
So the motion is to readmit, to readmit, and then you vote accordingly.
Okay.
Board Members, any more discussion? We all understand? To readmit? Hearing no more discussion, Board Members, please indicate your preference by your vote.
Eight no votes. It fails.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a religious exemption, case number 201920/01. What is the Board's pleasure? Ms. Hines made the motion. Reverend Patillo seconded. Board Members, indicate your, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Board Members, indicate your preference by electronic vote.
Eight yes votes. It passes.
The next item on the agenda is our Communications Annual Report. Ms. Lauren Galasco, our Director of Communications.
Yes, thank you. Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, and Members of the Board. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to give the annual communications update. And first, let me thank you for the adjustment. Usually, this report is done later in the year and during the work session, but we had a pretty cool development that we wanted to share before second semester, so thank you for accepting that change. So to begin, I'll remind the Board that in 2017, the Division hosted Hunter Communications to review communications practices and provide a comprehensive audit for whether the Division could stand to grow in its communication offerings. Thirteen recommendations were provided at that time. Over the course of the past three years, you've heard about the work done to meet those recommendations. For example, the Public Information Office has been transformed to the Department of Communications, and that's not just in title alone. The focus of our work has gone from serving as an informational resource to really being the marketing and the messaging arm of the school division. In this effort, the Portsmouth Schools Educational Television Station, or the PSET station, has joined the Communications Department to help provide comprehensive communications outreach in our region. Additionally, the school navigator program has launched, and that was to get more great news straight from our schools and our classrooms out into the media, into the greater Hampton Roads community. And of course, key customer service training began for school staff, which was provided in partnership with Three Dimension ED. So this year, we look to expound on many of those remaining recommendations that we hadn't gotten to yet, so I'd like to spend the next few minutes highlighting just some of this work. To begin, our website serves as the online foundation of information, resources, and news for our staff, for our families, and for our online visitors. As outlined by recommendation number six in our audit, there was a need to, and I'm quoting, "improve the school system's website, school sites, and social media by putting the resources in place to improve accountability." This summer, we took a hard look at the website design and identified some opportunities to streamline the current layout of the site. We also reviewed analytic data, such as frequently visited and search pages. That information in hand, we redesigned the site to help simplify access to these pages for visitors, as well as provide aesthetically pleasing pages for anyone who was seeing the site. So in October, we unveiled our new redesign, which should look somewhat familiar. As you can see, in making those key queried pages front and center, we were able to highlight our students, our schools, and our staff through that large photograph main banner on the main page. Our recent news section places breaking news and important division stories in prime space, right with upcoming school division events and calendar dates. And again, with PSET now firmly a part of the Communications Department, we wanted to be able to showcase those wonderful video resources with our featured video section. I also want to point out that this new design helped make more, was more, increased our mobile access. As more and more digital consumers are using, are going on websites with their mobile devices, this was a huge plus for us as well. So I want to thank Dean Schlafer and his team in the technology office especially, Tammy Barker and Julie Taylor, for all of their assistance and support during this process. It really was a team effort to get all these changes put into place. So as I said earlier, recommendation number six also mentioned social media. In regards to that, we have maintained an active presence on the Division's Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts. For those watching at home, if you've not already, make sure to friend or follow us at PortsmouthVA Schools on Twitter, or on PPSVA on Facebook and Instagram. That's a shameless plug right there. We'd love to engage with you. This year, to bolster activity online, we launched both the PPS Proud hashtag for our school division posts and classroom posts, as well as our graduation hashtag, Caps and Gowns, C-A-P-P-S. And we have seen some really great conversations online. For example, in the week following our graduation coverage, we had 1,933 engagements on our Twitter page. That led to more than 24,000 impressions on that space. On Facebook, our photo albums and posts led to a weekly reach of 75,197 people, and our Instagram page collectively had 463 likes. Looking since the launch of the 1920 school year this September, we've had more than 1,900 mentions and 154,200 impressions on our Twitter page, and another 19,300 page engagements, and 232,719 impressions on our Facebook page. We are working on building our Instagram audience and our following there. That's probably our lowest performing of all of our platforms. However, that being said, this year alone, we've already had 18,300 impressions in that space, so we are really excited about the performance that we've seen and the opportunity for growth that we have in the years to come. So of course, a large responsibility of the Communications Department is to work directly with the media with any of their requests or with their breaking news. Recommendation number four from Hunter Communications was to strengthen relationships with the local media. Again, in wanting to be as proactive as possible, this year, we created a weekly media advisory called our News and Updates. It's sent out every Thursday to every TV station and print publication in our market, as well as our Board, senior staff, and all of our division principals. Since July 1 of the school year, we've received 85 separate media inquiries or requests, and this is in addition to the 18 FOIA requests that we've received this school year. These combined efforts have led to some really great coverage for our school division, including the front page feature on the Brighton Elementary's Journey, Brighton Elementary School's Journey to Edutradation. They're not here to see it, but it's great. They got it. There we go. Thank you. The story on the best field trip ever for our students who went to the STEM Education Workshop at the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, as well as dozens of other articles for our schools, for our staff, and for our students. So that's pretty been external communications. Another key aspect of our work undertaken this year has been in supporting our internal communications, and specifically how to assure both efficient and effective internal communication with all of our departments and our schools and our divisions. This is in line with recommendation number five from Hunter Communications, which called for the creation of a robust internal communications program. To help support this work, beginning in September, we created a new memo and news delivery system for principals and department heads. Using a dedicated Google Drive, the principal packet was born. To avoid overwhelming school leaders with emails, all information in memo format is submitted to the drive. It's reviewed collectively by senior staff every, and every week in our weekly meeting for any edits or clarifications or additions that are needed, and then it's sent out to principals in one fell swoop, all on Thursday morning. With this new system in place for just four months, the initial feedback has been very positive and helped to build awareness and understanding of division efforts and events. Along those lines, we've also been very strategic in using our all-staff emails for any updates that have to go out, not wanting to overwhelm all of our staff members, and when possible, utilizing videos for those announcements or information to help enhance the experience for our staff members. The next step for that is a redesign of our staff-only webpage that currently exists on our website, but it needs a little TLC to make sure that it's got the needed information, forums, and events for all of our employees in one easy-to-use site. So it's been a great year, and we've done a lot of wonderful work. But I wanted to end tonight with one of our biggest undertakings. As you, as a Board, have directed and as outlined by the recommendation or communication audit, the school division needed a new logo and a new branded slogan. There's some nods happening right there. Great. In September, the Division partnered with Rocket Bike, an advertising and creative agency in Portsmouth, right here on High Street, to begin that process. First things first, we presented Rocket Bike staff with the logo ideas drafted by our graphic design students at Churchland High School last year for their consideration and review. Staff then met with Dr. Bracy's student, parent, and staff advisory groups to start concepting ideas for their new logos. They were asked questions like, if Portsmouth Public Schools was a person, how would you describe that person? Logo, concepts aside, these were fascinating conversations to be a part of. It was great to hear directly from our students, directly from our parents, and directly from their staff about why they're so proud to be a part of the school division. They each had unique aspects of the division that they, that really just made them joyful, so it was just a really great exercise to just be witness to. Plus, we got a great foundation to build our logo from. Rocket Bike broke down the feedback they received through all those sessions and categorized them into themes, and so it might be a little hard to see here, but they highlighted the top seven themes. Welcoming, friendly, positive, all considered one theme. Diverse or inclusive. Caring and nurturing. Pride. Innovative or forward-thinking. Progressive or evolving. And finally, leadership or personnel were highlighted as strengths. Using those themes, Rocket Bike built concept art for consideration, which were then presented to a smaller focus group that had been brought back specifically in order to give their feedback. Once we had a general concept in hand, we spent the last six weeks of the project, finding the perfect slogan to match the logo, and finalizing the last color, font, and details to get us to the final product. So you ready to see it? Well, we enlisted some help from all of our students, our staff, and our parents, so if I could get you to pay attention to this screen.
I describe Portsmouth Public Schools as a school division fully invested in students, a place that uses all students equal opportunity. As a parent of children in Portsmouth Public Schools, I feel this is a home away from home.
The education that is inclusive.
Challenges are turned into opportunities of success.
Exciting, friendly, and welcoming.
I love all the opportunities that students have.
I've always been surrounded by a team of educators who all put children first.
The field that I staff at is very conducive.
I love the fact that my grandchildren have access to so many innovative programs.
I love giving back to a school division who has poured so much into me.
The quality of education that I receive in Portsmouth Public School is...
Portsmouth Public Schools.
Shining brighter.
Shining brighter, shining brighter together.
Portsmouth Public Schools, shining brighter together. As a special launch gift, we have a new school division polo for you all, with our logo embroidered on it. We hope that you will join us in posting to our new division hashtag, PPS Shines, when you're out in our schools and you're making your visits. We'd love to see what you've got. And before I conclude my portion of the presentation, I did want to take a moment to thank, to recognize Annette Herbert, who is behind in the film section, Sonia Anderson and Diane Bream, who have been an integral part of this work over the course of the year and will continue to help us do even more great work for the years to come. We are so fortunate to have them as part of the communications team here in Portsmouth. So thank you to them. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We like it.
There you go.
We like it.
It looks great.
I'm jealous.
You're good. I agree. This is the definition of a quick change.
Go ahead. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent. As Lauren mentioned, this is something that the Board has asked us to do for quite some time, and I hate, Ms. Atkinson is not here, because she was one of the main ones that was championing this, and she wanted to make sure that we included the initial information and artwork from our students. So all of that was taken into place, so, but I want to thank Lauren, because she really came onboard and took the ball and ran with it, and as you can see, the final product. I mean, I, it, yes. You know, I'm one of those, I don't like surprises, so keeping this from the Board until we actually unveiled it, I got to admit, I was a little nervous about it. So I was happy to see the smiles on the faces. And I thought if we'd come bearing gifts, that might soften it a little bit as well. So I want to publicly thank Lauren, and I'm glad you all approve of it.
Thank you for your hard work. Awesome.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't think so.
All right.
I think, I think the polo speaks for itself.
Here we go. That's perfect, that's a perfect cue.
Very good.
Thank you.
Looks good. All right, the next item on the agenda is the monthly report, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Williams?
Good evening Chairman Parent.
very special treat for you because we are going to highlight FIRST Robotics.
Oh, boy.
And FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. It is an international robotics competition based on the tenets of gracious professionalism and cooperation. Infinite Recharge is the competition game for the 2020 season, and FIRST is in partnership with Lucasfilm as part of its Star Wars Force for Change Initiative. PBS will host the regional competition at Churchland High School during the week of March 14th through the 15th, 2020, and is sponsored by the Newport News Shipbuilding. So tonight, we have with us teacher Melvin Isaiah Mariner, and he is, um, I'll let him tell you why he's on crutches.
All right.
But it's not, it's not our fault.
The robot got you.
And with him, we have Brendan Gonzalez, and Brendan is a sophomore at Churchland High School who's in the top 15% of his class. He is an innovative, kind-hearted, and diligent young man. He is interested in computer science and design, and he is the computer science captain for the FIRST Robotics Team 3359, known as Royal Robotics. He is also active in his community, and he's a volunteer tutor at Churchland Primary and Academy. We also have Ryan Long, and Ryan is a senior at Churchland High School who is also in the Robot Robotics, FIRST Robotics, and he's here with his father, Richard Long. And I'm gonna let Mr. Mariner tell you all about it.
Okay.
Good evening, and we thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and speak to you all on behalf of what we get to do, and we are very grateful for what you all do for us as well. It's always nice when we have our competitions, getting to see the faces that come out there. You support us, and, and we know. She, she brought up me being hurt.
The robot got you, is that right?
That's, that's not why. I wear a lot of hats at Churchland High School, and one of them, I'm an assistant wrestling coach also.
Oh, boy.
So, that's, that's what happened this time. Trying to do things I shouldn't be doing anymore. But tonight, I'm here just to speak about FIRST Robotics, and I was here to speak about my team, 3359, known as Royal Robotics. So if we cannot go, well, I have my two team captains with me, Brendan Gonzalez and Ryan Long as well. I'm gonna let Brendan speak about one of his specialties when we get to that point in our presentation. So just tonight, I wanted to talk about, a little bit about the organization, which we covered. I want to talk about the competition we're going to have, our team's history, the goals that we have coming up, and also our district event that we'll be hosting. Next one, please. Yes. So FIRST Robotics Competition is the high school competition that FIRST has, and we talked about that a little bit. The competition was started in 92 by two of the more very prominent leaders, Dean Kamen and Woody Flowers, who sadly passed recently. He was the light on this world. And his philosophy is one reason why FIRST is as strong and diverse as it is to this day. Every year, there's a new game that comes out. Some of the games are annoying, and I think Recycle Rush would be one of those. A lot of the other games really are, every game is extremely challenging, and they've been getting more innovative. And gratefully for us, uh, the setup has been simpler. This year's game is called Infinite Recharge, a Star Wars themed, and that's why they got partnered up with Lucasfilm, uh, to make sure that what they were doing fit the image, uh, fit the image perfectly. So our team's history, Royal Robotics started back in 2009. Our first competition season was here in 2010, uh, and we had Ms. Danielle Morgan, who was our coach at the time. She was a physics teacher over at Churchland High School. She started out in a very small room. One of the advancements was moving down to the former woodshop, which is where we're currently housed, and gratefully, my classroom. Uh, it's a wonderful space, and whenever there's time, please come and see what we get to do. We have a lot of wonderful equipment in there that the students get trained on now, that we actually have the space to do so. Every year, we've been hosting competitions, uh, for like the last five years, uh, so this year, we'll have another competition, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as, uh, a little later. Next one, please. So just a couple pictures to highlight some of the things we've done. We didn't bring a robot with us tonight, but I couldn't be a robotics coach and not show you several of our products. On the right side, that is last year's competition robot. They named it the Great Drapsby, and it performed pretty well for us. It was the first year that our team had a successful lift system, and it was a pretty complicated design overall. I'm proud of these guys. One highlight to Brendan Gonzalez, he was a freshman on the team last year. He learned a new programming language, and he was the main person that programmed that robot over there on the right side. And at competition, we had no issues with our program. There might have been a few things we needed to change just for comfort, but there were no major crashes and things like that. So that was a big advancement for our team last year. Proud of this guy. So then, bottom couple pictures, I got my nephew playing with our robot when we were at Makers Fest, uh, shameless plug, I love that kid. The robot right there, that was a, the two robots, the other two robots we have, we actually took to the world championship competitions in the last two years. Of 2018 to 2017 was when we went. That was one in St. Louis and the other in Detroit. So I had to show off those robots. The picture top middle, that was when we were actually at the world championship, the first year that we qualified to go. So big advancements for the team. We're hoping to go back again this year. Yes, please. Couple more pictures, just when we were at Worlds, shameless plug, I was proud of my kids, so we had to make sure we memorialized the moment. So this year, some goals that we have. We definitely plan to have a successful competition, no issues. Last summer years, everything has been fine. We've had over 30-plus teams come in, and the events have run smoothly. They love hosting it down here, they always feel welcome. We definitely hope to win our competition, no doubts about that. Successful PID controls, you may not know what that means, that's what Brendan is here to tell you about. We plan to win at least the district championships, which is going to be in Hampton, Virginia, and also qualify and compete in the world championships again. That is our big, major goals. Next, please. So, uh, skip over this for me. We're going to have Brendan talk about our PID controls and explain to you what that means and why it's an advancement for the team.
Good evening. My name's Brendan, the lead programmer on Robotics Team 3359. And today, I'd like to explain some of the opportunities that I've been able to learn from the team. One of them is PID controls. What this is, is basically, it might sound complicated, but it's really just like autopilot for your car. It keeps, it's, another example of it is like, if you have a car and you want to stop at a stop sign, right? You might, you know, push your foot on the gas, go over it, you need to come back. It's, it's basically called open loop feedback, um, which is not, it's not, uh, like a system you want to have on your robot because it's, uh, it doesn't take in variables, which change the output of the robot, so it, it doesn't get it, it doesn't get it to a space you want it. So an example is, let's drive our robot five feet. You would have to manually operate it, but with PID controls, you can, uh, do math functions. P is proportional, I is integral, D is derivative. With these math functions, you can create a robot and make it perfectly stop at five feet, uh, perfectly line up with a target, or perfectly go up to a slot to shoot a ball into. Another example that I've learned is vision control. It's basically a camera that shines a green light at retro reflective tape, which shines the light back at the camera. The camera is basically a sensor that reads, uh, the angle that the reflection is at, and it perfectly lines up the two pieces of tape right in the middle, so it's completely automated, and our driver, Ryan here, doesn't really have to do anything, except press a button, which is, I think, pretty easy for him. But some of these are just examples that I've been able to learn over the great program at Churchland High School, and it's really changed my life, basically, because I'm always been in love with STEM, but being able to have an opportunity to join this team has really opened my eyes into what great opportunities Portsmouth provides and great places that I'll go with the stuff that I've learned from Mr. Mariner and his team.
Absolutely. Welcome.
See why I'm proud of this guy? I saw a couple brains from him. It's okay. He makes this very easy, and it's been a joy to have him around. It's the type of kid I know I can build a team on. Ryan, my driver here, was another one of those kids I knew I could build a team on, and he was one of the kids that I have right now that I've been able to take to the world championship. So I know my time is up. March 13th.
We got all night, but this is great. We don't, we don't want to rush you. Go ahead.
No, I appreciate you. So March 13th, we'll be setting up for our competition, which will open up the 14th and 15th. We have over 30 teams from all around Virginia, DC, Maryland area. Even last year, we had a team come from Rhode Island. And they'll be coming to compete in this game, Infinite Recharge. We always transform the gym, so if you've ever been in Churchland Gym for anything regular sports-related, and then you come out and see this, it's a completely different world. So I invite you all to come out. We'll make sure we have some nice seating for you. You can get front row seats, watch a couple of the matches till your heart's content, take a look around and see what other students, like what I have with me tonight, are getting to do with their time at school and with the resources that we have. So please come on out. We'll be competing in Infinite Recharge, and just one plug, sponsored by Newport News Shipyard. They always make sure that FIRST has a lot of what they need to host our event over here. Help us out with that. Thank you. We're grateful.
Wait a minute, we do have some questions.
Oh, yes.
Reverend Stillo?
Now, first I want to thank you, Mr. Mariner, for bringing your team out.
Yes.
Y'all are awesome. I, I was looking online on Google for my robotics for dummies book when you were talking, because I didn't understand anything you were saying when you were talking.
You're a little careful there.
You're, you're extremely intelligent, man. But I just want you to know that, uh, what you, I think what you all do is great. I also want to commend Ms. Nelson for always being a, a continual push for STEM. And I, I put y'all on the spot. I, I was presenting at a state conference, and Dr. Bracy had to tell you, I told the superintendent from Franklin, you would not come in our house this year and win this competition. So I've, I've already served warning, y'all are on the spot, and I'm gonna be able to witness y'all take it home this year.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Allen?
Good evening, gentlemen. As someone who has always attended the Robotics Event every year, I look forward to it. I like to yell, get my glasses, and sit through the, the teamwork, and everything that you guys put together is amazing. I don't understand the majority of what you're doing, but I just get hyped because we winning, and, um, I just like to tell other people that our robotics team is the best. So thank you for what you do. We've got some NASA-qualified people on our teams, I know we do. So thank you for what you do and the passion that you always show when you're out there with those kids. They feel it, and when they feel that you care as much as you do, and that you're as excited as they are, it proves in the, it proves in the work that you put out. So thank you. As always, shout out to Ms. Nelson. And thank y'all for what y'all do for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent. Each month when, um, Dr. Winn invites the students to come and talk with us, we're so impressed and amazed at what goes on in Portsmouth Public Schools that people don't really know, so we get to tell the story. And I enjoy going to the competitions and putting the glasses on like I know what I'm doing, and watching, and, and just seeing, seeing us win, because it is about winning. And we are fortunate, it is about winning, okay?
It always is about winning.
And we, we are fortunate to have you in, in Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm glad you decided to come with us. And I want to give a shout out to your dad and mother for, for doing such a great job with you, Pastor Dr. Reverend Melvin O. Mariner and Melody Coleman Mariner. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you, team. We will be there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Just like many of my colleagues, I, first off, I cannot talk enough. I mean, one of the, the, one of the many, um, things that I, that I did take away as serving on this school board as a, as a privilege, as a plus, as an honor, has been actually visiting and watching the competition, but also in the summer, going to the different summer camps. I mean, I'm a history person. Sometimes I can only stand there, like this evening, when a young man is talking about PID, just stand there and smile and whatever. I'll take your word for it. But, um, you know, I've always said that, that this program, uh, the whole, the whole thing with what we got at Victory Elementary, the STEM, the robot, everything, is probably one of the, um, shining jewels that we've got. And if there is a way that we could, in the future, even expand it and, and create and build on it, um, it would put us far beyond any of the other Hampton Road schools in the area. I plan on going because you just announced it's a Star Wars theme, which is my favorite, by the way. I don't care if Star Wars 1 or Star Wars 200. But with that, do you have a name for the, the robot? If it's a Star Wars theme, is this going to be Darth Vader? Is it gonna be?
We have a couple things in the works, but nothing decided on yet, uh, so. But most of the ideas are all a Darth something.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Well, we definitely want to, we definitely want to beat Franklin, so you've got to keep your secrets to yourself.
Indeed. The dark side has better force powers anyways.
There you go. May the force be with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes? Your light was on.
Oh. I just want to commend you for doing a good job with our children. Keep up the good work, and we, we want to beat Franklin and everybody else who's there, and I'm gonna be there representing. I'm, I'm gonna make me a shirt, and I'm, um, I'm gonna make a shirt, and I'm gonna make sure that, um, you guys don't, um, fail us, because if we got to cheat, we will, we'll make it happen.
I, I appreciate you. We can get you a shirt, man.
Come on. There you go.
Yes.
Yeah, I got one.
I was about to say. Yeah, we, we, we're gonna hold it down for us. We're gonna make sure that we make the city look good, and that my kids build something they'll be proud of.
Well, let me tell you, this board needs to stand up and give y'all a standing ovation. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
I have something for the gentleman. It's just a hat. I checked it out.
All right, the next, I, the next item on the, on the agenda is, uh, consideration of a resolution recognizing African American History Month, February 2020. A resolution will be read by Dr. Camardi, our Chief of Schools.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. Whereas as advocates for children, we work to provide appropriate opportunities for them to acquire the tools, skills, and knowledge necessary for their success and future well-being, and whereas education is an integral part of our instilling appreciation for America's defining values, freedom, equality, and respect for one another, and whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is proud to support America's role as a leader of discovery and innovation, and is deeply committed to ensuring that our graduates possess marketable skills, and whereas the professional staff has a duty to provide a comprehensive and competitive education for all students, and whereas February is traditionally designated to recognize the achievements and contributions of African Americans to the development and sustainability of our democracy, this year's theme is African Americans and the Vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes February as Black History Month, celebrating the all-important role of African Americans in the evolution of our city, commonwealth, and nation, and be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of Portsmouth School Board's official records.
Board members, you've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion has been made, and second, hearing no discussion. Board members, you've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion has been made, and second, hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. Dr. Camardi, would you read the next resolution?
Our second resolution identifies February also as Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas economic and technological changes affect the nature of our work and place increasing demands on public education; and whereas career and technical education provides our communities with school-to-career connections and is the cornerstone of a strong, well-prepared workforce fostering instructional, I'm sorry, industrial productivity and contributing to America's leadership in the international marketplace; and whereas career and technical education provides students with rich experiences and practical, meaningful application of workplace readiness skills designed to improve the quality of education and provide appropriate opportunities for all students to experience leadership; and whereas our career and technical education programs afford students opportunities to acquire learning experiences necessary to succeed in a complex society; and whereas the ever-increasing efforts of career and technical educators, business, and industry support the growth and vitality of our local, state, and national economies by preparing graduates for career fields, forecast for phenomenal growth in the next decade, excuse me; and whereas the theme for this year's observance is "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow", now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognize February 1st through 29th, 2020, as Career Technical Education Month; and be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the Portsmouth School Board's official records and that copies be widely disseminated throughout the school division.
Board members, you've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, and second, hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, thank you, Dr. Camardi. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes for December 5th, 2019, and December 12th, 2019. What is the board's pleasure? Ms. Williams? And Reverend Patel, second. Board members, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please make your vote by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item is public comment, and that will be for non-agenda items. Do we have a speaker tonight?
Yes, Ms. Amy Van Skyhawk.
Madam Clerk, would you read the?
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Van Skyhawk. I am the PTA president at Simondsdale.
All right.
The reason I'm coming to invite you guys, the reason I'm here, is I wanted to brag just a little bit. This year, we've decided to make a motto at Simondsdale PTA, "Making a Difference." So, we're not just making a difference in our schools. We wanted to bring our community into our school and to put that into our families. So, we have had a Math and Science Night in Food Lion, where we did hands-on things within cooperation with our Title I people, and we got our families out. Yes.
I'm sorry, they're tapping on the back wall, which means you pulled the microphone.
Pull it down? Okay. Thank you. So, we had our Title I go into partnership with us and our local Food Lion. We did our Math and Science Night in Food Lion, where we had hands-on activities, and our families came out, and it was a great experience. We have also, I have my notes, I apologize. We have broken the stereotype of just making PTA fundraising and paying things out. We have won two Nestle Grants for Healthy Hydration. We have won the $1,000 Be Internet Awesome Family Awareness Grant from Google. We are the only school in the city who has met all of our membership challenges for the state. And at Simondsdale, right now, we are on step five of our application for the National School of Excellence Award. Two more steps to go, and hopefully we get that accreditation. The reason I'm here is just to invite you guys to come out to our night in February. It's February 10th. I know it could be a conflict with another event that you guys have, but we are having our Be Internet Awesome Google Grant Night. We're gonna have giveaways. We're gonna provide dinner for our families. We are just gonna let our families know a lot about internet safety, but we're also going to let them know, you know, things that they can do for their kids. We have people who have donated free tablets for us to give away. We have earphones. So, we would just love to see you guys. But if you can't come in February, we'd like to see you in March. That's our Wellness Night. Wellness Night is talking about the total wellness of a person, not just physical. We're gonna bring in financial wellness advisors. We've got the food bank coming. We have mental health advisors coming in, physical fitness. We're gonna do our Healthy Hydration. The American Cancer Society is gonna come in and talk about cancer education for our children. We'll also have our book fair, so you can broaden your mind. So, we would just really like to invite you guys to come out to any of our events. And also, if you have not joined the PTA, Simondsdale would love to have you on our board. It's only $6 for membership. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Sheen?
Quick question. You stated that you are having an event in March. March what?
March 16th at 6:30 in the evening.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Lamb?
And I just wanted to ask too, you said February 10th, which there's a conflict, but what time was that?
Our event starts at 6:30. And we have a 45-minute presentation, and then we'll be having dinner, and our watchdog dads will be doing a little thing afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Next item is a public comment for our agenda items. Do we have any speakers for board?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is our monthly Human Resources. Mrs. Jessica Duran, glad to have you back.
Thank you very much. Good evening again. I would like to say how happy I am to be back.
We're happy you're back.
Oh, that's very nice. I appreciate you saying that. Board members, you have in front of you the monthly Human Resources report. I always said that if you look at this report, it kind of looks like HR is not that busy, but that's because most of the things we're doing, we cannot talk about.
Right.
So, please, never think that. We are super busy. We just can't share it publicly.
Right.
But we did receive a grant this month from Virginia Department of Ed to provide two mentors who are supporting our career switcher teachers, and so that is there. And I wanted to make sure that you have the date for our education fair that we're gonna have here for Portsmouth Public Schools. It's February 29th, which is a leap day, so you'll be able to remember that. It is a Saturday, and we will be hopefully able to make contact with many new teachers, as well as those who are in other school divisions who want to come to a great place and shine brighter together with us. Also, there are your standard, is the standard information that you receive every month about the vacancies. My team and I are hard at work with trying to develop those relationships and convince people to come on over to Portsmouth already. We have several trips that are planned already. And as I said before, we have already scheduled a fair to hold here at IC Norcom on February 29th. Did you have any questions about my HR report?
Mr. Lamb?
No, actually, that was from before. It never went off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Great.
Anyone?
Don't see any.
Okay.
The next item is the consideration of employee, our transaction report for January. Motion's been made, and second, hearing no discussion. Board members, please let your preference be known by electronic vote, please. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you. Next item is budget and planning. Mr. Falk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patel, board members, Dr. Bracy. We have several items this evening. The first being a decrease to the general fund, 2019-20 general fund, for actual encumbrances re-appropriated. In October, the school board approved a resolution to ask City Council to reappropriate $237,202 for estimated encumbrances at that time, outstanding at the end of FY 1819. City Council approved that encumbrance reappropriation on December 10th. Since that was an estimate at that time, that amount could change due to actual results. So, once final payments for those encumbrances were liquidated, the actual amount was $135,659. Therefore, we are asking for a decrease of $101,543, so that those items match the actual appropriation.
Motion's been made, and second, hearing no discussion.
Mr. Patel, will she make?
Well, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of a resolution requesting an increase to the FY 2019-20 grant fund budget.
Okay. The second item, as Jessica just told us, we get new grants from all the time. And at this point, we have a number of new grants or increases or decreases to grants that we need to bring forward to you for appropriation for City Council as well. So, the amount of grants that need to be increased, the total increase is $298,062. And also, some of those grants have local match requirements, so we need to also shift money within the general fund to make those transfers to the grants fund to take care of those local match requirements.
Motion's been made, and second, hearing no discussion. Board members, please let your preference be known by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the financial budget report for December 2019.
And the last item is the normal financial report for this month, and I've asked for a move for approval.
Ms. Williams made the motion to approve, and it was seconded by Reverend Patel. Board members, do you have any comments? Please make your preference by electronic vote. And Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The thing about the financial report, we deliver that to the city.
Email it. I email it to her.
You email them now, okay. We just want to make sure the City Council members are receiving our financial report.
The financial report? No, Mr. Falk's office sends that, but I email the resolutions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, this brings us to our superintendent's monthly report. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patel, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you and our community some key news about our school division. First, I'd like to follow up with the new logo design. I want to thank all of my advisory groups, from our students, staff, and parents. They provided some great information during those sessions. They provided us insight and feedback of their view of our division. As Lauren mentioned earlier, for us to be able to have Rocket Bike come up with that logo for us. I want to thank Rocket Bike, and we're also pleased that we were able to find a local company that was able to assist us in this endeavor. I'd like to thank the account team that worked with us, Max Greenhood, Allison Alfett, and Carl Medley. They worked collaboratively with us and provided great care and guidance with us with this new change. We're excited to see this new logo take off and highlight the things that we're doing and show how we're shining brighter together. Another piece and another reason you all wanted to do that, because we wanted to be able to have our own identity. You know, the previous logo, I mean, if you blink your eyes, it looks just like the city's logo.
Exactly.
So, we wanted to make sure that we could separate ourselves and show the great things that we're doing. This week is also an important week, as many of you know. This is Virginia Principals Appreciation Week, and I want to add my voice to the chorus of supporters for our school principals. We're fortunate in Portsmouth to be led by passionate men and women in our school buildings, and I want to thank each of our principals for all that they do each and every day for the children of our city. Along those lines, I would also like to take a moment to recognize our school counselors. In two weeks, February 3rd through 7th, will be National School Counseling Week. We will not have a meeting at that time, so I want to share now how grateful I am to our counselors, who provide our students with academic guidance they need in their school careers, but also the care and the patient voice that they provide to our students in their time of need. Please join me in celebrating National School Counseling Week and thanking the counselors for their hard work. Just a couple of reminders. Our first semester is almost through. Nala has shared that. I know the students are excited, because they have early release tomorrow, and they're off on Monday. But our teachers will be involved with the workday. And Tuesday, as was mentioned, will be the official start of our second semester. Report cards will be going home on Tuesday, February 4th. And we're looking forward to ending this year strong as we started it. So, with that, Chairman Parent, that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is, board members, do any of you have any reports or any comments you'd like to make? If not, I would like for you to join me at the podium at this time. Oh, Mr. Lamb, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I tried to get in there and just didn't hit.
Well, I'm gonna stand up and listen to you.
No, that's fine. Just two small things real quick. With regards, I've been approached with a couple things with regards to some things with teachers. I'm curious now, if we could, in the future, come up with, look at what is our policy with regards to the donation of sick leave, like into a sick bank? How we can do that, if we do that? How can it be used? Who can use it? And so forth. Yeah, I know we have one, but just to look and see how it is actually used? Who can use it? And so forth.
We don't currently have a sick leave bank, but we do offer sick leave donations, and that is a policy that's currently in effect for the school division. I believe years ago, they had a sick bank, but we no longer have that.
And are there stipulations with regards to someone being able to use sick leave?
Of course, yes. Of course, there are stipulations, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then secondly, I'm not sure if we've done this before, but I think it would be appropriate if, as we've done before with athletic teams and whatnot, of recognizing recognition when they've done very, very well for like state meets and so forth. I think this year, depending upon the end of the year for our robotics team, because I am sure they're going to make it to Worlds again, if at that time, we could do some kind of recognition or resolution with regards to their successes and how that could be worded and so forth, that I don't make those resolutions, so I'm sure someone could come up with it. But I think it would be fitting and worthwhile, considering that this team over several years has done very, very well and has put us on a map in many cases. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, board members, if you would please.
Mr. Parent, may I ask a question just for clarification? So, Mr. Lamb did bring up the sick leave donation policy. Is it the pleasure of the board that that be examined? Or, I mean?
Yes, I've got, I'm getting ready to put, Ms. Williams?
Thank you. We are on our way home. Can that go to the HR personnel committee?
Yes, ma'am. We're happy to discuss it at our next HR committee meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I wasn't expecting to give you an answer right now. Okay.
And I think next in February, you can, I'll be, you can bring that. All right, now, for third time, please join me now.
Can you email me that plan? The wording?
The wording. Email me the wording. Oh, Mr. Meekins. Oh, Mr. Meekins.
No.
You get up here, sir.
I first met you when I first ran for office in 2010, and that was a delight. Right, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
But I'm going to tell you, you have been a joy to working with us over these many years, and we do appreciate everything you've done. I know that you're looking forward to a kind of a semi-retirement. You know, the way you worded your letter, it was kind of, he wasn't getting out of law practice, but he was kind of stepping back a little bit. But this board would like to present this plaque to you, and it reads Certificate of Recognition Presented to Samuel W. Meekins Jr., School Board Counsel. In grateful appreciation of his dedicated service over the past nine years to the Portsmouth School Board, and in recognition of his continuing commitment to the public schools of Portsmouth, Virginia. And this, of course, is signed by all of the board members, and it's dated Thursday, January 23rd, 2020. Sam, God bless you. Thank you.
If someone takes a photograph? Yes.
Lauren, you can take, come take.
Mr. Lamb and Mr. Barnes, am I going to you and I'll probably... There we go. One, two, three. Got it?
Thank you, sir. Yes, you do. Thank you very much. Thank you. Board members, I think we have taken care of all the items on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made and seconded that we adjourn. We have any discussion, hearing no discussion. Board members, we adjourn. Thank you.